Welcome to the City of Kingman Planning and Zoning Meeting of Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a call to order enroll call?
Chair Goss.
Present.
Vice Chair Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Sarkisian.
Here.
Commissioner Swab.
Here.
Commissioner Noble is excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, we'll start the meeting with the approval of last month's meeting minutes. These are the regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, October tenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve?
A move that we approve?
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any comments? All right, motion approved. Next, we go to the consideration of public comment. Those wishing to address the commission should fill out a request form in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to public. The commission may direct the staff to study the matter or request the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any?
No, we do not.
Great, thank you. All right, now we have new business. The first item we have is the Public Hearing Conditional Use Permit Case CUP twenty-three dash zero 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 two. This is a request from Rex Rugi, applicant and Journey Church Kingman property owner, to approve a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow for the expansion of an existing place of worship under the land use public assembly, indoor general on property, partially zoned rural residential RR as well as commercial service business C dash three. The subject property is seven point four-two acres and is located on three seven eight two North Bank Street in Kingman, Arizona. Do we have a report from staff?
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Chair and members of the commission, thank you.
Thank you.
Making sure this PowerPoint comes up here for you. Okay. As the chair mentioned, this is a conditional use permit for the expansion of a place of worship or church at, which under the zoning code is generically covered under a land use called public assembly indoor general. The, if I can get rid of that, there it goes. The vicinity map here, you can see the polygon yellow with a star, that's the subject property. It's at the intersection of Keno and North Bank Street. General information, the applicant is Rex Rugi and the property owner Journey Church Kingman. The property to establish a church or to place a worship or to expand one that didn't previously have a, CUP in place under old codes, requires a conditional use permit under the most recent, zoning ordinance and code. And that is because the property is partially zoned rural residential and partially zoned commercial service businesses, which is RR residential, and then the C three is the commercial. And the RR is what triggers the conditional use permit requirement. Subject property is approximately seven point four-two acres and is located at thirty-seven eighty-two North Bank Street. Again, the subject property, this time with the zoning map overlay, so you can see sort of what the surrounding properties are zoned. As I mentioned, the subject property is split zoned, has RR rural residential on the north northern part, and then as it goes down towards Keno and Bank Street, it's zone commercial C three. To the north is C two, a lower intensity commercial, and then from the northwest, northeast, east and southeast, it's all rural residential along North Evan Street. Across Bank Street is a transitioning area from mostly rural residential lots along Bank Street, which will likely eventually become C three zones, but for now there are zoned RR and a mix of RR and C three. There's some of the surrounding land uses mostly vacant, commercial building to the north. Most mostly vacant, I'm sorry, across Bank Street and then directly to the south across Keno. But there are residences that residential, single-family residences that surround the property on the north, east and south. Just general physical characteristics of the property, the blue arrows show the general drainage, it's very, it's not very sloped, it's pretty flat. It does have water and sewer mains surrounding the property. Those are topographical lines, you can see they're one foot intervals if you're interested in that. This is a cool feature that the county has on their website, it's an oblique photo, rather than just a straight down shot of an aerial photo, which can be, this offers a more unique perspective, so I pulled that in and you can see North Evan Street on the top of your paper there, or top of the slide, and then Keno on the right and then Bank Street on the bottom there. And you can see the church, the property currently has the existing church, which I believe is seventeen, about seventeen thousand square feet, and they want to expand and build a new building, which is over twenty thousand square feet, we'll get into that a little more. So you can see the site is partially developed. Here's another oblique zoomed in view, that would be sort of, if you're really tall, your perspective of the church from Bank Street. But otherwise, you have to kind of envision yourself a little lower. These are some site photos we took on our, when we went and posted the site with the public notice signs, and so the subject property is to your left here. And that's our truck, Sean's truck, work truck. North Evan Street there, that's their right-of-way, so it is an unimproved street, but it is on the city maintained list, so it is a maintained road. And that white line is what the property owner likely had marked off their property for, obviously for development purposes. Here's another view just looking south and southwest, still on Evan Street. Subject property in this area, just like I said, is very, very flat. And then to the far right, that's where Bank Street and Keno intersect. So, following the conditional use permit process, the applicant did follow the citizen review process, held the two meetings on September third and sixth, they were held in the existing church building, and surrounding property owners were notified of that meeting, and they posted the site as well. It was reported that one person attended the first meeting and three people attended the second. And the only comment that, or concern, or really comment or question that one of the, attendees asked is if there would be a traffic light installed at Keno and Bank Street, and the applicant's response was their civil engineer did not, did a traffic count and the number did not warrant a traffic signal. That's not an official stance from the city necessarily, but that's what they responded to the, we didn't attend those meetings, that was a direct interaction between them and the neighborhood, which is a good process. And then the applicant reported, we're happy that our project was received so well by those in attendance. And then on our part, we also noticed surrounding property owners of this meeting, and we also posted the site and we posted our, placed an ad in the newspaper, and no comments have been received thus far. Department and agency comments. For the review of the actual CUP application, the engineering department reported that the, that they did not have any objection to the CUP as long as the development conforms to all applicable code, rules, rules, ordinances, et cetera. But this also has a concurrent concept plan review going on, and in that, in those comments, the city engineer provided specific comments, which I've incorporated into the proposed conditions of approval, which are numbers four through ten, and we'll get to those later. Fire, building, UNS, might be flood control, they all had no comment. The conceptual site plan, which is submitted with the application, shows the existing seventeen thousand square foot building, as well as it's the twenty, almost twenty-four thousand square foot proposed building. The areas on the concept plan, which are included in your staff report, or in the staff report, show parking, proposed parking, drive aisles and landscaping. The required setback for the RR zone is the structures have to be fifty feet back from a residential use, which would be residential property. So, and then on their site plan, the proposed building, even the existing one is, is at least fifty feet from all property lines. The conceptual building elevations show four sides of the proposed building, those are also in your, in the staff report. The final site plan, the final development, how this is all gonna work out if approved, it would go through the site plan review process and building permit process, which then we would, likely whatever the concept plan has here, it would require some reworking to adhere to all the standards. We give them as much information as possible for these concept plans, but they're not final plans, so this will go through another iteration. I thought it might be helpful to show you the, generally how it's developed currently, which is in blue, the site, and then how it will develop on their, based on their concept plan in the green color. If you're colorblind, just let me know, my sons are, so I can understand the frustration. The red circles, the solid ones, are the existing access points, and those are both onto Bank Street. There's definitely informal access onto Evan Street, but it's just dirt, but nothing formal, those would just be on Bank Street. And then proposed on their concept plan is a, in the dashed red line there is Keno Avenue on your, on the right side of the slide. And as they proposed it, it's a right in, right out there. Here's the concept plan without the coloring. And if you need me to come back to this plan, just let me know. Here are the building elevations, the architectural drawings, elevations, and they show the front of the building, on the top would be what you'd see from Bank Street. And then important is the rear of the building, which is on the bottom of the page there. That's how essentially the building form would look from Evan Street, so the neighborhoods. I'm sorry. The second from the bottom. Does that make sense? Okay. And I can return to this slide too. The public hearing process, again, this body decides these matters, approve, deny, or approve with conditions. If it's appealed, only upon appeal will it go to council, so you do make the final decision. The required findings that the planning commission has to make are found in the zoning code section two dash forty dot oh four oh E. That is that the conditional use permit, or the conditional use request is consistent with the objectives of the code and purpose of the zone in which it is located. The public assembly or place of worship is permitted in the RR zone, which is generally, the intent of that zone is large lot residential, but as with some limited uses such as places of worship, those are generally always permitted in residential zones, but often with conditional use permit requirement though. The granting of the conditional use permit will not be detrimental. No apparent nuisances or hazards are likely to be generated by this fairly low impact and quiet use. Obviously, there are peak hours when everybody congregates, literally, and, and that'll happen occasionally, but it's not a twenty-four hour operation. Now, it is within your authority to limit hours of operation, but they're, generally speaking, they're, this isn't one of those that we anticipate having difficulties with neighborhoods. Significant traffic is not expected to be generated, again, not on peak times, but as proposed, vehicle traffic, as I mentioned, will access primarily from Bank Street and, and secondarily from Keno Avenue. Any informal access that exists along Evan Street will be eliminated through the design of landscaping and barriers like that, so that'll be eliminated there. Continuing with the findings, the characteristics of the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. The bulk regulations of the RR zone limit the height of buildings to forty feet, this one's only proposed to be twenty-nine or almost thirty. So that's not being maxed out. Furthermore, the setback from, of the building from Evan Street, which is part of the RR zone, will reduce that apparent size or bulk of the building. Additionally, the KDR, the Kingman Design Review Overlay Zone, so we have the design review standards, and then we have the Kingman Design Review Overlay Zone, which currently apply to Wallopee Mountain Road and then along Bank Street. Those will add an additional level of architectural standards, adding more interest to the, and breaking up those long expanses of buildings, which you saw the elevations already, it's fairly broken up, but we'll look at that again, of course. Minimum parking for such a use is one per five seats or one per thirty-five if seating areas, seating areas with no fixed seats. The applicant provided a breakdown of the parking requirements, we still have to go over that, you know, fairly detailed to make sure it all works out, but it looks like they've done their, a good job on that and provided the parking that's required. The site is again seven, almost seven and a half acres. There will be landscaping required, obviously perimeter setbacks, and adequate space will be provided. No known noise, light, visual or other pollutants should arise from this use. And then E, the architectural standards, as I mentioned, will help with the blank featureless walls and not allow that along the facade facing, facades facing the street. F, conceptual plan shows landscaped areas. A landscape plan will be required to be submitted with the site plan review and building permit review process. Parking lot screening is required along the property lines budding residential land uses. That can be either done, done either through a landscape strip or through walls, and those walls would have to be earth tone color. Along Evan Street, this is where it gets a little, it mixes a couple different standards, and I'll, I explain it and I spell it out in a proposed condition of approval, so you don't have to think about it too much, how it all mixes together, but along Evan Street, parking area is not permitted in the required front yard. And in this case, these subdivision lots were platted such that all the lots along Evan Street are the fronts of those lots. So this is another frontage and front yard. So the required front yard setback is thirty feet, which the parking area is not permitted in there. However, there's also a minimum ten-foot wide landscape area required between parking lot areas and the street. Proposed condition of approval addresses these standards and increases the compatibility and of land use in the residential areas. The standard is, the proposed condition basically states that within that thirty feet, we would basically allow drive aisles, but not the parking spaces themselves. So with a ten-foot landscape buffer, which they're required, and then twenty feet of, twenty plus feet of driveway, two-way drive aisle, it's, the thirty feet's already taken up there, so it shouldn't be too difficult, and then the rest can be parking. That'll also prevent, which sometimes happens, parking lot lights that aim straight at houses when they're parked towards the residential areas, that would be eliminated. And then also, there's a, in the proposed condition of approval, that there's a wall that's required there, but the condition, how it is written, maxes the wall out at thirty-six inches plus, which is our normal standard for a front yard fence, plus an additional wrought iron type fencing along the top a foot of it, which again is compliant with our standard of thirty-six max in the front yard, forty-eight if you have see-through on top of that, or if the whole thing's see-through. Signage standards, they'll have to adhere to the KDRO standards, and that requires a separate permit outside of this process, process and the building permit process. Outdoor lighting, we've, we have our lighting ordinance, but we also put in their conditions of approval, just to add that, we don't want that affecting the neighbors. Street improvements and right-of-way considerations, that's another criteria, criterion that you have to consider. Now, if you can read the fine print there, improvements to Keno and Evan Street are required, the extent to which is to be determined by the city engineer and through a possible street deferral request, which the granting of is decided by the city council. At this time, I'm only aware of the request to defer the improvements or pay a fee in lieu of potentially along the frontage of Evan Street. The improvements required at Keno will not, they're not asking, and I'm aware of any deferral of that, so. Again, the frontage of their property along Evan Street would need to be improved, but if the deferral goes through, then it won't be required. There are no known historic, prehistoric or natural resources on the property. Now, planning staff is recommending that the commission approve the conditional use permit to allow the expansion of the, essentially the land use with conditions, and the conditions start out with, obviously, the CUP would expire one year from the effective date, so November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, that's ten days after this hearing. Architectural design standards apply to the whole site, because currently the architectural design standards, the standard ones apply to Bank Street. The Bank Street or Kingman Design Review Overlay, the added layer of architectural standards only applies to a certain area along Bank Street, not the full distance to Evan Street. However, when the design review, the overlay was established, it wasn't necessarily anticipated that a lot of these lots would be combined and then butt up against residential, so as a condition, which we've done with a rezone on north of here quite a ways, but that was with a rezoning, on this condition, we're recommending that the KDRO standards just apply to the whole property. I think, believe that's the intent. And that'll increase, obviously, the compatibility, which is that finding that would hinge that on that decision. Along Evan Street, I mentioned, this is the condition that needed to be really spelled out. A ten-foot strip in width is provided along Evan Street. The area must contain trees, shrubs with irrigation. The, within the thirty-foot required setback, no parking spaces are permitted, but again, drive aisles, that's acceptable. Along Evan Street, an earth toned color, earth tone color CMU wall, concrete masonry unit, not to exceed thirty inch, thirty-six inches in height shall be provided. An additional twelve inches of decorative wrought iron may be added to the top of the CMU wall, not to exceed forty inch, forty-eight inches of overall wall fence height. All development, development on this property will be in accordance, this is, these now go into the engineering conditions, and the city engineer put on here that all development on the site will need to be in accordance with the following, City of Kingman Streets sidewalks, development rules and regulations, City of Kingman Utility Regulations Uniform Standard specifications of the MAG, as amended by the City of Kingman, the City of Kingman Design and Administration Manual for Drainage. And then he goes on to mention that a traffic memo will be required to estimate the number of peak hours to the site. Any peak hour trips twenty, two hundred or greater will require a traffic impact analysis. And that's sort of when you'd start getting into that realm of, is a signal required or not, so. If that threshold is reached, that analysis would address those types of items. The peak hour calculations must include full build-out. Unless a deferral is approved by the city council, the street improvements, as I mentioned earlier, would be required, and they're described here by the city engineer. Also, unless a deferral is approved by the city council, roadway improvements, well, the item, condition number six addresses the Keno Avenue improvements, number seven addresses the Evan Street improvements. And then number eight, fire hydrant locations and water line easements potential may be required and will be determined during the site plan review and building permit phase. There is an existing landscape meter, if the existing meter is insufficient to serve the new building, a larger meter will be required. Trash enclosure, enclosures must be screened, and if city refuse is requested, the design must accommodate our trucks, which are right-side loading only. In addition to the outdoor lighting requirements, no direct light source from the subject site, subject site shall be visible to the adjoining residential areas, that's the light source itself. And I believe that is, yeah. Hopefully that wasn't too, too long, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I do, I might as well start. Can I see the, yeah, the proposed, that one, right there. Can you explain a little bit more of the Evan Street? How it is supposed to look with the walls and the parking spaces?
Yeah, actually, that would have been nice if I could have drawn that out for you, but.
That's okay, I just, maybe you can just kind of talk us through it?
Yeah, the, so Evan Street on the top of the slide there, right now, they have proposed a small landscape buffer with, as conditioned, and as the front yard requirements, no parking is allowed in that front yard, because it's a front, front yard on Evan Street.
So is that the, is that side the front yard of the church?
No, it's the front yard of the property, as is Bank Street. As I mentioned, these were platted as residential lots along Evan Street with the frontage along there. They were also platted with front, other lots were platted with the frontage along Bank Street. The church, in the past, had decided to combine these lots.
Okay.
That doesn't then eliminate that as a front yard along Evan Street.
Okay. So it's, that, the, so the back of the church is the front yard of the property?
The street frontage along Evan Street is a front yard.
Even though there's no exits or anything, that's the front, okay.
Yeah, it's just a front yard.
Okay.
So just like the neighbor next to him would have to setback thirty feet, you know, things like that, so.
Well, where, well, the neighbor's front yard is on the same side then? Or no, they get a different side?
Yeah, I'll show you then.
Okay.
Yeah.
There we go.
So that shows you that Evan Street, and then to the left and to the right are homes, and then across Evan Street are also homes.
Okay.
And those all have front yards, required front yards along Evan Street.
Okay.
So that, you can see how these were platted that way, so just because you'd combine these for tax purposes essentially, doesn't then dissolve that as your front yard as it was platted. That's an issue that comes up often.
Okay. Is there a way to move your front yard?
Again, it's about plating, so if you subdivide it that way, that's generally the way it has to be treated. So I, I think I mentioned recently, picture somebody, say, in the Ranch of Santa Fe, they buy a big vacant lot behind them, but it fronts another street. Well, then they combine their lot, because they want a swimming pool or something back there. That's fine, but that doesn't then make it suddenly not their front yard back there. And an example would be in the Ranch of Santa Fe, if they did that, suddenly they have a six-foot concrete wall out to the street, and the neighbors on both sides both have these nice yards, you know, and their homes are setback, and then suddenly there's this block wall that comes right out to the property line. That's kind of a extreme example, but it's how it can happen in a residential area, if you don't treat these as front yards as they were platted. So in that case, he would be able to do his pool, he'd be able to do in addition, but that would have to have the front yard standards such as fence heights, and likely they'd have to landscape that area, but.
So they could have a pool but not a fence that was very high?
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to do a six-foot fence all the way to the property line, they'd have to setback twenty feet with their six-foot in the Ranch of Santa Fe.
Okay. Okay, so we've got ten feet and then a short wall? And then, how does, sorry, can you show me the other one again?
So it'd actually be, they could put the wall on their property line.
A short wall or a regular wall?
Yeah, they could put the wall along Evan Street at three feet or four feet, and then they'd have a ten-foot landscape strip, or they could do it opposite, it's, it's up to them at that point. And then beyond that, they would have the ability to put that drive aisle, which is actually currently shown there. So that's how it would work out.
Okay.
So, can I ask a question regarding that? So they currently have proposed parking spots along Evan Street and. staff recommendations are that they would not be able to do those parking spaces?
Yeah, per, per our understanding of the zoning code.
Right.
It's not allowed in the front yard.
So the way that they've, that aspect of the plan would not be suitable?
Yeah, and I, I mentioned this to the applicant in pre-app meetings before, but it's okay that they provided this as a concept plan and, like I said, it'll go through another iteration and, so.
Okay, I guess I have one other question then, if just in general speaking, is it, if, say, a building like this has parking and it's clearly not a front yard? Is there any leeway in our deciding whether or not things are suited for front yards or backyards?
Well, hopefully, it's spelled out as the zoning code states it, so I don't know. Parking is not allowed in the front yard, required front yard.
But if it's a conditional use permit, aren't we changing things?
You, you don't open up opportunities in the conditional use permit, you actually apply more restrictions to make it more compatible with the neighborhood. Otherwise, this is just a straight project, we reviewed it administratively, apply the standards and, and it's done. What the conditional use permit process is, hey, this is a somewhat unique land use and a unique area. So let's look at it and see if all of our standards are going to apply anyway, but here's a chance for you to clamp down on some things that might be, you want more restriction on to increase the compatibility with the neighborhoods or the vicinity that it's in, it could be a commercial neighborhood.
Okay, but didn't you say it wasn't unique because you could put places of worship in rural residential?
Yeah, but I also mentioned that it's, it's generally a residential zone.
Okay.
But American history, we put churches in neighborhoods, and so this is a unique, commercial-like land use in normally a residential area. So it falls under the conditional use permit process.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, there's no entering and exiting on Evan Street, is that correct?
None proposed.
And so that's maybe why they would be considering a deferral of the development of the roads there?
Yeah, I believe that is part of their assertion, their argument.
Okay.
Do we have any further questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Growing up here, you know, I just know Bank Street used to flood like a ditch, it was basically a concave. I, I believe the city has pushed the water to one side of the street, and if I'm remembering right, it's going to be toward the bottom, toward the south of your map right there, right? So what I'm getting at is it's not forming a channel that would block people in from that side and possibly make a, another entry exit on Keno or some area, maybe even Evans, more useful to the property. I think, is that right? Does it, does the water channel along the south side of it now?
I, I wouldn't speak specifically to exactly the dynamics, I don't know.
Okay, because I didn't see anything in the, the access traffic about that because it's almost like flood and traffic going into one.
Yeah.
The other thing too is, I have a son, he goes to Emmanuel Christian, and I know on Stock, or on Wallopi Mountain Road, there's no sort of signs or anything that say twenty-five miles an hour, you know? This is a lot of church right here, a lot of church, so in theory, they could have a school in there with that restrict Bank Street down to a twenty, another twenty-five mile an hour zone?
You know, I don't, I couldn't answer that.
But it's just.
But theoretically, that would be an expansion of the conditional use permit and may need to come back before this body.
Alright.
Because right now, it's a place of worship.
Well, just as a resident, I've always been confused as the, the intention of what the city wants to do with Bank Street.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we have one of the widest roads that parallels Stockton Hill, and yet we neck it through a twenty-five mile an hour zone, which causes everybody to just use Stockton Hill Road. If we're doing another sort of restriction on that road, it, it might make more people go to Stockton Hill Road, cause some more backups. So, just a thought.
Bank Street used to be a two-lane road. Now it's four-lane, and when they did that, when it came, I was on the zoning committee when city annexed all this, swapping with the county. And with their, with their zoning codes and our zoning codes, we inter-swapped, and most of ours coincided with theirs, but just inference like some of these right now. None of the residents up there had any problems because now they're in the city, or before they were in the county and didn't have any. And we haven't had any problems after, since Bank Street was widened, yes, it is river. But so is Maine and, right over here. And actually, the only problem is, is their way. It flows up there, Bank and Airway, that's where it really gets bad. Rest of, rest of Bank Street flows pretty good. No, the dirt gets down to the channel there.
Do we have any more questions?
Not here.
Any more questions?
I had just one last question, we're just approving a CUP, like, we're not setting any terms or conditions, correct?
You're approving the conditional use permit to do a place of worship?
Uh huh. And we can do that with staff recommendations?
Those, those recommendations or recommended conditions of approval would then be your conditions.
Okay.
Through a final order, which we'd have the chair sign after the meeting or, or as soon as we can revise it to incorporate any changes or anything, so. The ones presented are by staff and agencies incorporated in there, and they're to help you make the best decision possible, and so we give you those conditions and, but once you adopt it and say, we approve this, you know, with those conditions, it's then the commission's decision.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? No? Thank you so much.
Do you want me to have it on any slide for you or is this good?
That one's fine.
Okay.
Alright, now I'm going to open us up to public comment. I received a few papers to start us off, and the first person that I want to call is Rex Rugi. He is bringing this to us, so come on up.
Thank you very much, all of you. And thank you, and I would respectfully request your consideration of a couple of, I don't know if it'd be interpretations or modifications to what the staff has recommended.
Can you just give everybody a quick update on who you are, that way they?
I'm Rex Rugi, I'm with, I'm with Journey Church. I'm one of the elders of the church, I'm also happen to be an architect and a general contractor, so I'm kind of, I'm kind of the church lead on the project.
Great, thank you.
Alright. And I'd like to say, first of all, you know, we are trying very much to be good neighbors, we understand that, you know, we are in an area where there is a lot of residential, we understand Evan Street is, you know, is a street, it's unimproved, so it's a dirt road. So we have done quite a few things to try to mitigate our impact on that community. First of which was, we did break down this building, again, if you see on the elevations, we've broken it down, tried to give it a much more human scale, much more residential character, it's broken up into a lot of different colors and faces and ins and outs and things like that. So that's one of the things we've done. We also intentionally did not put an exit onto Evan Street. Probably the biggest issue that the neighbors have is with dust along Evan Street from people driving on Evan Street. And generally, we don't create much of that at all, that's just a historic, people don't like the dust on Evan Street. So one of the things we were going to do again was to put up the wall. We're also going to provide the ten-foot landscape buffer, we have no issues with that at all. However, we do have an issue with this thirty-foot setback as far as the parking goes. That was ran, as, as I understand it, is that was, in the original, in a rural residential use, there is that thirty-foot setback. That setback though, even, even, and you can see it in that picture right there, there are cars across the street parking within the first thirty feet. So I'm not really understanding, you know, what, what that is, I think I'm, I'm having the same struggle that I heard you initially have, I don't understand why there's any kind of an issue with parking. Once you get past, you know, again, we'll put up a decorative screen wall of whatever height that, you know, everybody can agree on. I think that's good for the community, I think the, the neighborhood would like to have a screen wall, and we're all, you know, we'll, we'll do that at whatever height they would like. But as far as the thirty-foot setback, I don't, I don't quite get that. The other thing is that it says that you're allowed to have a parking aisle, but not parking, or a parking, a drive aisle, I'm sorry, a drive aisle. Well, if it's going to be asphalt anyways, what is the difference between having an asphalt drive and striping it to park on it? The way that the plan is laid out allows me for double-loaded parking, so you can go and park on the right or the left, it's just the most efficient way to do parking. So if you restrict parking to not being in the first, first thirty feet, you're essentially saying that that's going to be single-loaded parking and that other twenty feet of that thirty feet is just going to be a no man's land with nothing that I can use it for because I can't put the building there and I can't put the parking in it. So I would also point out that this plan, we started back in March, and this was never an issue. This was not an issue on the initial comments that I got from the city in June. And then all of a sudden, this has kind of become an issue, so that's, I would ask that you guys would modify that and eliminate that condition so that we could do this project as it's, as it's drawn. So that's basically what I have to say. Do you have any comments for me?
Sure. Go ahead.
I concur with you, and I can understand the parking. Great, much, I can understand, you know, if they're willing to do the ten-foot plus the wall, why not allow them to do the parking with their drive-through?
Turn your mic up.
Sorry. I concur with you, you know, they're doing the ten-foot plus the landscaping. Let them have their parking, they still gonna have the driveline behind one row of parking there.
Yeah. We, we can just, we can discuss that more amongst ourselves, does anybody have any questions for Rex before?
I have two questions. I'm assuming, but the architecture for the new property would match the current building for Journey Church, I'm assuming that it does.
It's similar.
Okay.
Again, this is much more broken up. The, the, the original building at the time that we did it was approved as meeting the Wallopi Mountain Corridor requirements for the, what you call the KD, whatever it is, the, you know, the better, the better designed street. So that, that meaning, that building at the time did meet that, the, the property just to the north, which is Devault Electric, I also designed that, that met those requirements, we've actually gone way above and beyond to try to, to break this thing up and, and to meet, you know, as closely as we can the letter of the law as far as those guidelines.
Okay, thank you, and then my second question was, there's a ten-foot setback, the property is thirty feet, so you're saying there's twenty feet in between and you were wanting to do parking, like, you would have parking spots for like double cars, right?
Right, so you could, you could turn to the right or the left to park, that would be on the site plan.
So, yeah.
They've got the, the site plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, by eliminating that parking, we can eliminate that parking, it just eliminates forty-five, fifty spaces that, you know, maybe on Christmas Eve, once a year, it might be nice to have those spaces, we, I, I'm pretty sure when they go and do the, the detailed parking analysis that we've got plenty of parking, I mean, we're, you know, it's not going to benefit us if we, we have facilities for people to come in, but they can't park, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, the next request to speak I have is Andrea Goldberg. Come on and approach the podium and let us know who you are.
Hello, and thank you for your service to our community. My name is Andrea Goldberg, I am a property owner across the street from Journey Church, I also attend that church. And I completely support the construction of this new worship center on this property, they're a valued member of the community. And the new center is necessary for them to help the disadvantaged in our community. And I think you can see from the plans that they've been very well thought out and very well vetted. And I've grown up here in Keeman, and they have been an excellent and considerate neighbor in all ways, it's always considered when we have any of our events. So I completely support your approval of this conditional use permit, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
I have a question. Hi Andrea. Do you know, are you, do you know if the neighbors care about whether there's parking along Evans?
I attended, I was one of the three in the second meeting. And that did not come up as an issue. And so I would say that that's not an issue with the, the neighbors, at least it was not voiced.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and the next request that I have is Mike Rodriguez, can you come up and let us know who you are? Thank you.
Good evening, Chair of Goss and members of the commission, my name is Mike Rodriguez, I'm representing Journey Church. Primarily just as, I guess, a co-consultor for, and the capacity of a co-consultant, I've had some experience in planning and zoning and, and building, working for different public agencies. But the, the, what I wanted to address was condition regarding the the, the way the construction is going to take place along Evan Street and with the the wall construction, the landscaping, and then the, the the, the parking that is being proposed by, by Journey Church. I think the way that the code is being applied is incorrect in this case. The, the, the shorter wall that's being, that's spelled out in the condition for a three-foot wall with a twelve-foot wrought iron along the top of that, I don't think is applicable in this case because that's for a residential use. We're not proposing a residential use, this is a, a place of worship use. So the, the residential standards, I don't think are applicable in this case. Which would address the, the parking concerns that we at Journey have about being able to have the parking right up against that, that block wall, the proposed six-foot block wall, which according to your code allows that, that, that wall to go up to eight-foot tall, which we're not proposing anything that time, the, the whole purpose is to be able to provide privacy from the adjacent residential community and then be able to have the, the area for parking for the church itself. So I think the condition that spells out the, the prohibition of the parking along that one back, back property line along Evan Street, I, I think I would recommend that we consider revising that to be able to allow the parking under the, the terms of the conditional use permit. Because it just seems to make more sense and, and is allowed for in your code.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions? Alright, thank you so much. Alright, do we have any further public comment? Alright, I see none, I will close that and open up for commission discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yeah?
If I may, I just, I just wanted to point out that the theories that are being brought forward are being brought forward for a commercial property. This is still a residential property, okay, so regardless of whether we agree or disagree, that these are, these are applicable because this is residential property. For them to not be applicable, the property would have to be rezoned to a different, different zoning. Also, just additional information to kind of help with some of the decision-making, you as a commission absolutely have the right to take this condition out. However, it's still applicable in the code to what this condition is. So regardless of whether or not this is taken out as a condition, those standards still apply. There are other options with that, however, currently, right now, as, as it sits, that's how, that's how staff will apply the code.
Can I just make sure I understand what you're saying?
Yes.
You're saying that if we pull out that provision, that your responsibility is still to enforce that provision?
Correct, because that, that isn't, so that provision was just added in there as kind of to, to ensure that it occurred that way. It's not necessarily putting a further condition on this as a conditional use permit because that is what the standard is in the code. because that is what the standard is in the code.
Chair, same with the conditions that we put in for this city engineer. If he didn't say you have to comply with all the road standards, drainage standards and everything, you could take that out too. Doesn't mean that those standards don't apply still. So sometimes we'll put them in there to help reinforce the standards and to help guide and show how compatibility will be addressed, so.
Can I ask another question? Is there any compromise that the department feels comfortable with? Or is this, I'm really just trying to understand.
No, yeah, absolutely. And it's one of those things to where in some of the codes, there is room for compromise when it comes to the zoning code. Unless the code specifically states that there could be a compromise in the situation, you can't have a compromise. So the code is what it is when it's in the zoning code.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, I need clarification on a couple things. So he pointed out there's cars parked within thirty feet of the houses right there, right? And we're saying that no cars can park within thirty feet of Evans Street? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Chair and Commissioners, this, that is a good question, and the zoning code anticipates that. This is a residential zone again. And in the zoning code for location, it says that the parking spaces are not permitted in the front yard, except in front of garages and carports. So it anticipates garages and carports for residential use. It doesn't then open it up to commercial-type parking lots, so that's where that's addressed. So those residences are in compliance.
And what was said previously, in order to fix that, you have to rezone the property, correct?
I mean, there's a couple different ways that, and I don't know that fixing it is the correct word to use. There are a couple things that could happen, so. And this isn't the forum for that, but just a couple options is to rezone, is to do a co-text amendment. Which, again, it would be brought back to you again, and then go to council for that text amendment. There are other avenues to go down, but currently, as the code is written, we're applying it as the code is written. So whether or not we agree or disagree with it is neither here nor there, so.
It's clear for me now.
So if we, if we take this out, and it goes in front of the council, can the council agree with us, or is that allowed?
This does not go... The conditional use permit does not go before council, before council. So you absolutely can take it out, however, it's still going to be applied, because the code spells it out that way.
And there's no leeway in that?
We, as staff, don't have authority to do so. The only way that that could happen is if the applicant were to apply for a text amendment within the code. But again, in doing that, that's more time, that's more, you know, study that has to go into it. We're absolutely, you know, willing to do so. I just don't know if that's the route that the applicant would want to take.
My understanding, part of this property is already zoned commercial, and the other part is residential?
Correct. The property that they're developing is residential, though.
I can't, okay. So let's finish with our commission discussion, and then if anybody has any questions, I can open things up differently depending on who wants to ask questions, but... So I can't open up the public comment right yet, so. So it already has? No, we closed that, and we're in commission discussion. Yes. So this is when we get to discuss among ourselves, and then if we have particular questions, we can ask them, but...
Well, I would, okay, so am I able to ask if they have additional information? Right now, at this moment, or do we need to talk first?
You can ask, you can ask me
Okay.
to let them come and talk to you, or you can talk amongst ourselves, but you have to ask me.
Okay. Chairwoman Goss. Can we, would you be interested in opening up comment to see if there's any additional information from those who have come to speak about this?
You, should we? Okay, I will open up public comment for Mr. Rodriguez first?
Uh, yes.
Okay, then I will reopen public comment, and we will hear what you have to say.
I understand, we're still in the public hearing, so this is still for the public record.
It, this entire... Well, so I can reopen public comment, but then I will have to close it again before we can continue.
Which is on, along the Evans Street side of the project. The standard that I think staff is applying, apply to a residential use. Not a non-residential use was just permitted under the conditional use permit provisions in your code. So that's why I think the commission and staff and the applicant have the ability to be able to just negotiate this out, to be able to have a condition written in this use permit that's being applied for. To be able to address this question that we're having. In this case, I don't believe that the residential parking standards that are being applied by staff on that portion of the project are applicable, because this is non-residential use under the conditional use permit provisions that you have in your city code. So therefore, I think we can take the code, the condition that's being discussed, I think we can take and revise that condition to be able to allow what Journey Church is requesting in their application for this use permit. To be able to address the parking issues that I think are being applied incorrectly for a residential use on a non-resident, for what would be a residential condition on a non-residential use that we have with the application for the church, if I'm saying that correctly. If you have any questions of me, I'll be able to try to clarify some of what I'm saying. I think I may be confusing things, which I'm trying not to do.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rodriguez?
And just for your benefit, just on behalf of the church, I'm representing Journey Church. I do have about thirty-five years' experience in building and zoning and planning. I was a director in, or community development department in the past, so I'm somewhat familiar, not familiar with your code entirely, but I think the standards that are being applied by staff may not be appropriate for what's being proposed by Journey Church. And I think we can hammer that all of that out. But I think that, you know, what the church is proposing is in compliance with the city's code and with the provisions of the use permit that's being requested here.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to hear? Who else are we getting? All right, I'm gonna close public comment again and open up commission discussion. Okay, here's my thoughts. So, of course, we can do whatever we want, right, with conditions. However, if conditions are going to be applied regardless of what we pick, then we can only do as much as we can do. And after this meeting, other things would have to be done in order to remove certain conditions, right? Because if we don't control what happens after that, then there's no way that we can particularly change those conditions, which doesn't mean we can't voice our opinion by not putting them in. But it does mean that getting too tied up about them, trying to change them, it doesn't sound like it's going to happen, because we don't enforce the code, so.
Voice our opinion by saying, by silly that, set up that way? There could be a good reason that we don't, I don't agree as well, right?
So, yes, I mean, that's all part of the discussion.
Does anybody think there shouldn't be parking on Evans Street, the way they have it set up in their plans?
I don't, I don't think that it matters what we think. I think that it matters that they're requesting a CUP, and that according to city plan, we are required to keep the rural residential city plan. So I don't, it doesn't matter what we think about it. We're required, we're... It doesn't matter. I mean, the Journey Church has an opportunity to do something if they want to do something after that.
Yeah, as a commissioner, sorry, Chair Goss, commissioners, as a commissioner, I rely on the expertise of these planners over here, and they're saying that this is, should be treated as residential. In general, I don't like properties butted right up against each other. So I get the need for a buffer with residential homes. I can see this being slightly an issue. What I would like to see, just based on the water and Bank Street periodically, is this church to be able to use that egress over there, which would chew into their available parking spaces. You know, sometime down the road when Evans eventually is paved. I know that may not be conducive to what the city's planning, but, I mean, just knowing that road, it might be good to have another way out of there. So, anyway, I'm gonna stick with the recommendation of the planning and zoning over there based on that buffer. And they can fight this through the traffic commission or whatever they mentioned in this packet. So, thank you.
I think we should allow that thirty feet, because they're already giving themselves a buffer. They're doing a ten-foot plus a wall. Why take another thirty feet from them?
Twenty feet.
It's the road.
Can I ask, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
I have, I have a question for Mr. Ruby. Is that, does anybody mind if I ask it?
Yes, Chairwoman, you may.
No.
All right, let me open up public comment really quick, and I have a question for Mr. Ruby. I have a question for you. Can you approach the podium? I'm just interested what your take is on the parking in the back, considering all the other things that you've heard today.
Well, again, on that street, you're allowed, you can see right there, there are cars, they're not even parked in front of the garage. There are cars within thirty feet. What's the difference if I'm parked, and besides, I would say, what's the difference between parking in front of a garage or parking behind this building? To me, it's the same thing, and these parcels have been combined. This is not, again, we keep talking about all these resident, rural residential properties. This has been, the church property where the church is located now has been one parcel for a decade. The other parcel is commercial. They've been combined, so what you actually have here is one parcel that is multiple zoning in that same parcel. And as, you know, as an architect, I have never encountered in my life being required to have front yards on both the front and the back street. It's just not, it doesn't happen. Even when you're on a corner lot, they designate one street as the front and one is the side. So why am I being required to do two front yards, when I've never encountered that in thirty years in Kingman? This has kind of become, this was, you know, a total surprise to me when it happened. Again, staff, they've had this plan since March. And, you know, if they had said back then, hey, you know, you're gonna have this issue moving forward, then we probably would have gone for a rezone, but the conditional use permit was the easiest way, according to staff, to accomplish what we are doing with what we showed them.
So your hesitation in asking for a rezone is the amount of time that it would take to go through that?
At this point, it's a time issue. Again, we started in March, we have funding, we are, you know, our holdup has been the CUP, because we cannot move forward in the building department process. We've already got documents in for site plan approval, for grading approval. You know, we could turn in for a building permit approval, and we can't do any of that, because we've been held up in the CUP process since March.
Do you see, do you see anything that can be done? Do you see any possible solutions?
I mean, I can lose, I can leave the plan the way it is and not stripe those forty-five spaces and have a forty-five-foot wide driveway.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ruby? No? Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, public comment is closed again. Commission discussion is reopened.
So you like the idea of having an entrance off of Evans, because it just, like, for flooding purposes? Is that what you were saying?
Oh yeah, because they're gonna have the entrance off of Kino and two off of Bank.
So that's, so that's moot, that's kind of a moot point at this...
Yeah, I think that's kind of far down the line.
Okay.
They're gonna have a ten-foot buffer.
Yeah.
And plus a wall.
And it will be the nicest driveway, right? I mean, it will be paved. There's no paved driveways in the neighborhood.
I still don't see that we have any, I still don't see that there's any solution other than following the code at this point. Does anyone see any other possible solutions?
Well, I'm not in favor of condition number three, but I don't see that there's a whole lot that we can do about it either way. But I do, I mean, I definitely think that we should approve the CUP. I would put that out there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should approve it with staff recommendations. I don't... You want to?
I don't like three either. I think it seems silly too, because it's not a front yard.
But I, I mean, I don't know if this is what you're saying, Gary, about like, if we leave it as it is, then maybe they would put grass there or trees. Is that what you're saying? Yeah, and I agree with you on that.
Well, I think they're definitely not gonna not pave it. I think they're gonna pave the whole thing, because it would be, if it wasn't parking spaces, it would be a drive. So there, I don't think, and there were design, like architectural and landscaping standards already in there.
They still have to stick to the code anyways. We're just voicing our opinion. They can do whatever they want still. They just remove three, voice our opinion.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
Do we have any further discussion?
Well, I just, I think, I think we can, I seriously think we should, I think his argument's logical. I understand. Well, I just, I think, I think we can, I seriously think we should, I think his argument's logical. I understand that by removing it doesn't actually change anything, but it voices an opinion. I do think having a cog parked ten feet away from the Evans Street doesn't hurt the visual look of anything. I think that it's a very nice place. It's paved, right? Diverting water, I'm sure they already took that into pay, in, in, out. Now you're trying to divert, diverting all the water somewhere else. Right? So you have ten-foot of landscaping, you have twenty-foot of pavement, ice pavement with white stripes on it. And again, Rex can just not put the white stripes on it, they'll approve it. So, to me, we can just remove it, saying, hey, it doesn't make, it's not totally logical, but I understand the code as well and they have to stick to the code.
Do we do a vote and see if we, if...
So...
Or do we?
My, I would ask, does anybody else
Agree.
agree? Because if they do, what we would have to do is remove the motion that we have on the table and make another motion. So, do we have any other discussion?
I do, yeah, but I'll go along with, I want to approve the CUP too, so.
Um, so if that, if that's what you decide to do, you're still gonna have to vote on that motion. If that motion is...
Yeah, you have to vote on the first.
Because you have, you have a motion and a second. You have to vote on that and then you can bring forward another motion.
Okay.
Yeah, if, that's if...
Well, that one would have to fail before you could...
And let, let me be clear, you, you could bring forward another motion if that motion fails.
Alright, well, I guess, let's take a roll call vote on the, on the motion. Can you restate your motion just so that we all know what it was?
Do you, do I need to second it again?
Sure.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote? Chair Goss? No. Vice Chair Blair?
No.
Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
No.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Yes.
Commissioner Swab?
Yes. It's right in the middle.
What would you suggest, Sean?
You guys get to discuss it some more and then re-vote?
Okay. Well then, does anybody else have anything to say on this matter?
Chair, just, for the record, my, my motion is tabled at this point, right?
No.
No, it's...
It, it was split.
Yeah.
It's active.
No, it's, it's just kind of combusted. We have to try again.
Purgatory, I guess.
We're gonna discuss and then make another motion. I believe the motion is still there. It just hasn't been passed or failed yet. So usually, I believe you, you discuss it more and then
Re-vote.
do re-vote. After that, I'm unsure.
At, at this point too, the person who made the motion can decide to withdraw the motion as well.
Um, I'm not in favor of withdrawing just yet. Maybe I can convince you guys.
Yeah, I, I'm also wondering if we can persuade you a little. Um, I under, I understand stating that you don't agree with it and considering that we don't have any power to change anything, I wonder if I could persuade one of you to vote with us to pass this, so that we can move forward and two of you to state your dislike with this. So that that is stated for the record.
See, and I think there could be another option too, because if one of you agreed that saying what you had to say was important, even if there wasn't anything you could do about it was a good idea, then we could also have a vote differently and move forward. So there's both options.
Well, Chair, really quickly, may I address the, uh, planning and zoning?
Yes, sir.
So, earlier, the gentleman brought up the nature of a front yard. And, um, I, I do see to the south of this property that the, basically the, the parking extends directly to the street with, what? Maybe a ten-foot buffer? Looks like it goes from the sidewalk to the parking lot with, with very minimal space between them. So how, how do we determine in here which is the front yard of the property?
So, and it, it it's, it's, this is one of those things that's difficult, right? And be, even though the, the lots are combined together, right, we still have different zoning. Right? You have the Bank Street side, which is, which is commercial, and you have the Evans side, which is residential.
I get you.
So, even, even though you are combining those lots, that does not negate the actual plat that's there and in place.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I think it's, I, I don't know, I'm just still trying to persuade a little bit. I, I know that we talk a lot about, um, the, the city code and trying to enforce the city code to prevent people from, um, going off kilter. And I don't get the impression at all. I, I respect the plans and everything that Journey Church has presented. I think it's important to support staff in supporting the city plan in order to show our support for that as well. And I know that you're not suggesting not supporting that. But I, I guess I'm, I am supportive of the city plan and the city code in that regard, that that is rural residential which requires a front yard and that a CUP does not negate that.
And I guess it, it seems to me that when we do make these CUPs, that they usually are in kind of unusual circumstances. And like the building next door, which is also a business, they have a whole parking lot system that seems to back right up to their residential there. And I know when we did Dicky's barbecue pit just a little bit ago, that backed directly up to a residential, but that was technically the backyard.
But I don't...
And not the front yard.
Sorry to interrupt you. I, I don't know that any of those were rural residential lots that were getting CUPs, were they? Because I think that that's...
But it, it just, it appears to me a bit of semantics maybe and kind of just a big waste of time. Like if you could just have it be a CUP that allowed it, if they were just going to go and change... If, if you could just change the type of property that it was and then move along, you wouldn't even have these issues. Like if they could just incorporate the entire thing into a business zone, then none of this would even apply.
Excuse me. I hate to interrupt, but the motion fails because it tied, so it's dead.
Okay.
So we could, am I right, Annie? It's dead or resend it?
Good evening, Chair Goss, Commissioners. So when you have a tie vote, your motion does fail. There is an opportunity that somebody could bring forth a new motion, but you cannot continue to motion to try to get something through. So it, you just want to be careful and make sure that you're not keep reframing it until you eventually get it to pass um, because that kind of breaks down the integrity of it.
Does the, does this need to go like on the back burner until we have seven people here?
That is, that is your choice. If there is a, um, another motion that is wanted to be brought forward for a vote, you can. Um, the city attorney just advised that you cannot continue.
Okay.
If the motion continues to fail, you can't keep revising it until whatever it is. You know what I mean? Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well then, does anybody have a new motion that they would like to make?
Yes. Let me just worry it properly. I'll move the approval of the CUP with the removal of number three from the recommendations. Am I saying that right?
Correct.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote? Chair Goss?
Approve.
Vice Chair Blair?
Approve.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Swab?
No.
Motion passed.
Yes, motion passed. Alright.
Moving on.
Well then. Now we have our next item on the agenda and that is the public hearing of continual use permit case CUP two-three dash zero-zero-zero-three. This is a request from John R. Hanson, applicant and Western State Self-Storage LLC property owner for a one-year extension of time for the previously approved conditional use permit, CUP number CUP two-two dash zero-zero-zero-four for the expansion of a mini storage warehousing facility located on a one-point-five-nine acre parcel east of Stockton Hill Road at twelve-twelve Gordon Avenue within a commercial service business C-dash-three zone.
Commission, Chair, members of the commission, I'm gonna try to go through this fairly quickly. It is a, a request for extension of time for a previously, I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Rosa Garcia. I'm one of the other planners here. Um, so it is a request for an extension of time for CUP, um, uh, CUP case two-two-zero-zero-four. Um, and it is for the expansion of a mini storage facility located at twelve-twelve Gordon Drive. Um, the applicant is John R. Hanson, property owner, Western State Self-Storage. Um, like I said before, it's a extension of time request, um, for that previously approved CUP for an expansion of a mini storage facility on a, um, C-three commercial service business zone. Um, this is located west of Stockton Hill Road, um, at twelve-twelve Gordon Drive. Uh, adopting the extension would, um, allow the use until September twenty-nine, twenty-two-four. Um, here is a map of the zone for the subject parcel as well as the surrounding zones. There is commercial to the north and east of the property, some multifamily to the west as long, as well, uh, as some multi, uh, sorry, single-family residential. Um, here we have, um, the surrounding uses. Uh, directly to the north, there is an office as well as to the northeast along Stockton Hill Road. There is an existing, um, U-Haul mini storage facility, uh, directed to the north across Gordon Drive. And there's other, uh, commercial uses to the east there. There's a carpet flooring store, tire repair, auto repair. This is, um, a map of the existing utilities and physical characteristics. You can see the contour lines. Um, the property is, is fairly, um, flat. There's only about a three, I'm sorry, it slopes slightly to the south. There's only about a three to five-foot, um, slope towards the south of the property there. There is an existing sewer main, uh, six-inch sewer main to the north and a twelve-inch water main as well. This is an arrow view of the existing site. Um, you can see where the existing mini storage units are located. Um, and the area where there is existing outdoor RV and boat storage would be converted to, um, mini storage units as well. Um, this is a survey of the existing conditions. It has the contour lines once again. Um, and at the bottom, the southern-eastern portion, you can see, uh, there, um, there's a small existing retain, retention basin there. Um, this is their conceptual site plan. Um, they'll be maintaining that, um, retention basin and expanding it at the southern-eastern portion of the parcel. Here you can see the proposed water lines coming off that twelve-inch uh, s, uh, water main. Um, and the darker, um, the darker lines there would be the proposed, sorry, the proposed buildings. This is, um, a view fr, looking south. Uh, there is a driveway to access the property, twenty-five-foot wide driveway. And here you can see, um, the view from Gordon. There's a Stockton Hill Road, um, adjacent to Gordon on the far left picture. And you can see Gordon Avenue and entrance to the subject property. Uh, the location, sorry, the size of the parcel is approximately one-point-five acres. Um, they, the conditional use permit would be to expand the use, uh, within the existing one-point-five acres um, and add additional units. The characteristics of, the physical characteristics of the site, um, there's a general slope with about, um, a couple feet, um, difference there. Uh, public utilities, as mentioned before, six-inch sewer main on Gordon and twelve-inch water main on Gordon. Um, the site is accessed from an existing twenty-five-foot wide driveway via Gordon Drive. Um, Gordon is approximately a fifty, a fifty-seven-foot wide right-of-way. It, it's paved and has a vertical curb with butters on both sides. The projected land use under the Kingman general plan is community commercial. So it would be in accordance with that projected land use. Um, the surrounding, um, the surrounding, um, Kingman general plan designations to the north and to the east are also community commercial. And there are some, um, medium-density residential, um, land uses abutting to the south and west. The existing land use, um, as I mentioned before, uh, mini storage units. And there's, uh, existing outside storage yard for RVs and boats. Um, I talked about some of the surrounding development previously. There are single-family residences with six-thousand-square-foot lot size minimum. And, um, there's, um, multifamily, uh, zones as well there to the west. Um, this is a little bit of history of the site. Um, some of this was presented along with the original, um, CUP findings. So the property, um, was annexed, um, and zone C-three. Um, there was a, a building, uh, permit issued for two mini storage buildings in nineteen-eighty-eight, so this storage facility has been there for a while. And there was another building permit issued in nineteen-eighty-nine and early nineteen-nineties, uh, for seven additional storage buildings, the total of which is ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifteen square feet. Um, in, um, by ordinance eight-two-four, um, the conditional use permit, uh, for a mini storage, uh, unit facility was still required. Um, so that didn't change in, um... And thereafter, the City of Kingman approved another, uh, sorry, a CUP to expand the mini storage development by approximately eighty-six units. However, that one, that conditional use permit, um, expired since the use was not established within a year. Um, with the new code, the, um, the city continues to require CUP in a C-three zone for mini, mini storage facility. Um, and it also requires now a citizen review process. Uh, the applicant conducted two neighborhood meetings on four-twenty-six-twenty-two and four-twenty-seven-twenty-two at Centennial Park. Uh, they, they notified... Uh, they, they notified, um, uh, residents via postings and, uh, via mailouts to twenty-three property owners within three hundred feet of the site. Uh, the concerns that they raised were lighting hours operation and building height, which were discussed as issues of concern. In regards to the building height, there was, um, a condition with the original CUP that stated, um, that the new development, uh, building heights should be the same as the previous. And so, uh, one of their concerns was addressed through that condition. So there, that specific CUP was approved, um, on, and effective on September twenty-nine, 2022. Um, so today, we're, um, we will be evaluating the extension of time requests. Uh, so in accordance with, um, the notice of public hearing, code section, uh, mailouts were sent out to forty surrounding property owners within three hundred feet of the site on October thirtieth. The public notice, a public notice was posted on the site on October thirtieth. Uh, there was a notice placed in the Kingman Minor Newspaper on October twenty-ninth. Um, as of today, no, um, public comment has been received for this request. Um, department and agency comments, um, there were no objections from the engineering department, as long as the original conditions specified are met. Uh, the fire department noted, um, similarly. There were no comments, um, from city, from the city building official, community development manager, um, and UNS Electric Mojave County Flood Control replied with no comment. Um, the extension of time requests for the previously approved CUP two-two-zero-zero-four, um, uh, sorry, this is a one-year extension of time requests for the previously approved, um, CUP, uh, two-two-zero-zero-four, which allowed the expansion of a miniStorage complex. Um, it, this, uh, permit became effective on nine-twenty-nine, 2022. Um, the extension of time application was submitted to the city on September twelfth of this year and deemed administratively complete on September eighteen, prior to the one-year expiration date, uh, which would have been on September twenty-nine. Um, at the time of the submission, um, the applicant had not established their use through an approved building permit, so this warranted the extension of time application. Uh, the applicant hasn't provided a reason or explanation for the request. Um, per the zoning code, uh, the, uh, CUP request, uh, extension request can be granted for a maximum of one year, but not more than two years beyond the original effective date. Uh, thus, uh, staff would support a one-year extension to September twenty-nine, 2024. Um, department comments support the extension of time requests, uh, provided that the initial conditions are applied. There have also been, uh, five additional conditions recommended. Um, this is just a little bit of overview on the project. Um, I'm going to try to go through this, um, a little bit quicker. Um, there, uh, the applicant provided a survey and conceptual site plan. Uh, we took a look at the survey earlier, um, and the site plan, uh, which shows their proposed scope of work. The new, um, area, uh, of the, the area for the proposed buildings would be 10,275 square feet. Uh, the storage units are accessed through a security, uh, through an existing security gate, as we saw in one of the earlier, uh, photos of the site. Um, there's going to be paved internal driveways between the units, and parallel parking would be provided adjacent to the new storage units. As I mentioned earlier, retention basin is shown at the southeast corner of the property. Um, of course, uh, if this is extended and, uh, the, the, the applicant submits a site plan, um, some of, it might, it most likely will be modified to ensure that it complies with all adopted codes and regulations. Um, here's the conceptual site plan again. You can see that there's two additional buildings, um, C, uh, building C is along the south side, and building B would be along the west side. And there would be one large building proposed, um, as well as a new fire hydrant, um, and an extension of the existing buildings here. And this is a proposed retention basin again. Um, these are some of the findings, um, by which the initial, um, CUP was approved. Um, there's no apparent hazards or nuisance likely to be generated by this. Uh, storage of hazardous materials is prohibited. Um, the stormwater basin will need to adhere to the city's design administrative manual. Uh, the, uh, significant traffic, um, is not expected to be generated. Um, the estimate, there would be an estimated two to three trips that would occur in addition to, uh, what is currently occurring on that street. So that was found to be, um, insignificant, um, not significant. Um, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding areas. Currently, uh, there are block walls, um, adjacent to the residential, um, areas. Uh, further, um, the, the new buildings would have to comply with the architectural design standards, which state no more than twenty-five percent of the walls, um, orientated towards the street can be, um, metal or other reflective material. In addition, uh, the developer will have to, uh, provide five percent landscape area of the development area. They will need to provide a new water meter and a new fire hydrant served by the eight-inch public water main. A twenty-foot-wide water line easement will be, will need to be dedicated to the city. Uh, landscape water meter may be required. Um, the meter box will need to be traffic rated. Uh, signage and outdoor lighting, if proposed, will have to meet the zoning code. Um, this includes any, uh, fully shielded or wall-packed lights or fixtures within fifty feet of a residential zone or public right-of-way. Um, staff recommends that no direct light source be visible from the subject property to the west of the site. No dedications or right-of-way, uh, no additional right-of-way dedications are anticipated. Uh, there are no known historic, prehistoric or natural resources on the property. Um, staff recommends approve, approval of the extension of time requests to allow the expansion of a miniStorage warehousing facility at 1212 Gordon by affirming the findings and attaching the following conditions. The first, uh, ten conditions are the original, and the five after are, um, as, uh, recommended, as recently recommended. The first one is access to the site. An hour shall be limited from six AM to ten PM. Um, for them to provide a grading and drainage plan in according, in accordance with the City of Kingman's Design and Administrative Manual. Um, and also if there is intended access to be utilized from an adjacent parcel, um, there should be an easement recorded. Uh, the wall, again, uh, they are subject to, the architectural design standard should, um, any, uh, wall facing the public right-of-way exceed twenty-five percent, uh, metal. That would, uh, not be, uh, allowed. Uh, condition five, they would need to provide a landscape plan with the site plan review in according with the landscape standards. Um, and that is for an area that would be equal to five percent of the development area. Uh, condition six, internal driveways would need to be improved with a durable dustless surface or asphalt concrete or similar, uh, surfacing. Um, in accordance with the International Fire Code, internal driveways must be in minute, oh, sorry, a minimum width of twenty feet. And where the fire hydrant is located, a minimum of twenty-six feet wide. Um, the internal drive aisles that are less than twenty-five feet in width are, are intended to prov, sorry, that are intended to provide parallel parkings. Uh, parallel parking should be marked as one way, and it should be shown on the site plan. They will also need to provide an onsite fire hydrant. Um, and, um, in addition to the outdoor lighting requirements, there shall be no, uh, direct light source visible from the subject property to the residential neighborhood south and west of the site. Um, uh, condition number eleven, and this is, these were added just to, um, uh, ensure compatibility with the existing zoning code. Um, eleven, uh, in accordance with the zoning code, um, accessory outdoor storage is limited to operable vehicles with a valid government registration, and any accessory outdoor storage, storage units must not exceed ten percent of the gross site area. Um, condition twelve, the maximum storage area of an individual storage unit is limited to no more than a thousand square feet. The stor, uh, condition thirteen, the storage of refuse, compost, explosive, flammable materials, and other noxious or dangerous materials, as determined by the fire marshal, is prohibited. Condition fourteen, the minimum drive aisle width must be no less than twenty-one feet. And condition fifteen, the facility shall comply with all sections of Ar- Arizona revised statutes, chapter fifteen, self-service storage. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Rosa. Does anybody have any questions for staff? All right, thank you very much. Okay, now I will open up public comment. Does anybody have a comment?
Nobody here.
I see none. Okay, I will close that and open up commission discussion.
We'll make a motion to extend the CUP for one year. There, I, I see there's no explanation why, but there is circumstances, like, uh, we've had this before, but one-year extension is not going to hurt anything.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion to approve CUP twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-three.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote? Chair Goss?
Wake her up over there.
Approve. Chair, uh, Vice Chair Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Swop?
Yes.
Unanimous motion approved. Thank you. All right, the next item we have on our agenda is the discussion of planning and zoning meeting days. Beginning January twenty-twenty-four, Tuesday will no longer be available as a day to hold planning and zoning meetings. The available options for meeting are first, second, or fourth Wednesday of each month. This item for discussion to distinguish which day would be best for commission members, discussion and possible action.
Who checked this out?
So, um, this is something that's come into play. Um, the city council has been having a lot more workshops and being a lot more involved in the day-to-day operation of the city. Um, manager, um, Miller, um, he has suggested this, um, quite frankly, it's something we agree with. Um, for instance, today, we had a council workshop, um, right before this meeting, and they counteracted and their meeting ran into this meeting, and it caused issues. Um, so what the suggestion, well, not suggestion, what the order is, is that we will, um, no longer be able to have any other type of meetings, commission meetings, or anything else unless it is with the council. So Tuesdays are being reserved for, um, council. Um, so essentially, i- in looking what the schedules are and everything else, um, basically, it's, it's been determined that Wednesday is the, based upon other meetings and other things that are going on with other commissions and everything else, um, the first, second, or fourth Wednesday are the only options that we have. Um, so essentially, it's kind of for discussion. Um, you don't have to make, um, a decision on it today. However, it would help if you did, because then we can just move forward as far as staff and planning things out for the next, when our next meetings are going to be held, um, and we can adjust all of our dates and everything else. So with that, any other questions?
Okay, so one question I have is, as far as I know, the December meeting is my last meeting, correct?
Yes.
So with that being the case, um, that would be up to you guys then to decide when you want your next meeting.
If we do the second Wednesday, it's only one day after what we're doing right now, so I, I'd go along with the second Wednesdays.
Uh, Chair Goss, is the time up for debate? I get off work at five, and I know other people that might be interested in serving on the commission. Um, is it possible to shift it to five-thirty to give potential commissioners time to get here from work, or?
That actually is a point of contention. Um, when the, the meetings used to be at five-thirty, but they were moved till five o'clock. Um, I, that's something that I would have to check on, and that is a, a, actually not up for, um, this, this, this part of the discussion. It's just the day of when it actually occurs. That's something I could absolutely, if directed to do so, can bring back, uh, changing the time of the meeting.
Okay.
I think the reason we did it, we moved it up to five o'clock, because these folks are already here. And moving it back, this, the time difference was affecting the staff also.
Right, so, I, I mean, at five-thirty, we're still here as well. You just, guys just have thirty minutes to get your meetings done and out before we have to start paying overtime.
Chair Goss, yeah, I'm good with the second Wednesday.
Okay, do you want to vote on that? Okay.
I would appreciate it.
I make a motion to accept the second Wednesday of the month.
Second.
All right, can we get a, can we get a vote? Chair Goss? Approve. Vice Chair Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Waters?
Approve.
Commissioner Quinn?
Approve.
Commissioner Sarkisian?
Approve.
Commissioner Swop?
Yes.
Unanimous motion approved. All right, the last order of the day is announcement by commission members. This is limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items, or future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Um, I have one thing to say, and that would just be that I am retiring finally, coming, um, December. And so, uh, that will be my last meeting, so you guys might want to start thinking about who's going to do this job and that job and all the other jobs later, because there will be a shift. So keep it in mind.
You've done a great job.
Oh, thank you so much.
Fantastic.
Thanks for your service, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, so I'll see you one more month, but does anybody else have anything to say?
I was just gonna say, there's still another month, guys.
I will be here for one month.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right, adjourn. Adios.